So it's now seven o'clock, so I'd like to call this steady session of Lakewood City Council for Monday, December 14th to order. The first agenda item, behavioral health process update is going to be kicked over to next year, our January 4th meeting, because Chief Zar, the presenter, is unable to attend tonight due to health health reasons. So the first item for consideration is number two, a review of the third quarter 2020 financial report. And for this, we have Ms. Kraus.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm just going to share my screen, which has the general and street fund summary. For the fourth, for the third quarter, just looking at the general and street fund, we have our operating revenues are down by $1.5 million or 4.5% compared to 2019 year-to-date. And compared to the year-to-date estimate, revenues are down by 200,000. On the expenditure side, operating revenues are down by 2.5, almost $2.6 million compared to 2019 year-to-date actual. And compared to the budget estimate, it is down $3.6 million or 12.1%. So on the expenditure side, this is a result of the action strategies that the city manager has implemented. On the revenue side, I just want to highlight some of the revenues. Sales and use taxes down by $206,000 compared to 2019, but up by $868,000 compared to the budget side. And on the gambling tax, obviously, we're down by $1.1 million or 46.5% compared to 2019, but down by 38% or $820,000 compared to the year-to-date budget. Other decreases that we're seeing is on the admissions tax, down by $290,000 or 77% compared to 2019, and down by $283,000 or 76.5% compared to the year-to-date budget. Development Services, as you can see in this table, is up by $385,000 compared to year-to-date 2019. And compared to the year-to-date budget, is up by $274,000. And speaking of development services, I have combined Public Works and Community and Economic Development in the cost recovery. The cost recovery on a year-to-date basis on the actual side is 104% compared to the target of 85%. Same is true for Parks Recovery. Their target is 45%, and that is being met at 45% target. And note that the city manager has shared some of the revenue updates, and I just wanted to throw out a few for where we are through November. Development Services continues to do very well. And through November, their revenues are $1.9 million, and we had estimated $1.7 million in revenues. Real estate excise taxes, you've seen, has exceeded the year-end estimate as well as the budget. So through November, sales, real estate excise taxes, about $3 million compared to the year-end estimate of $1,960,000. Our vehicle excise, our vehicle licensing fee through November is also meeting target. We've collected $820,000 through November, and that is compared to an annual estimate of $835,000. And there's, as you can see, there's a lot of information in the reports. I was just going to stop my presentation here and answer any questions.
Questions from Council? Question. Mr. Bulkey, is that you?
No, it wasn't me, but I have a question.
Any questions? You're up then.
You want me to go first, Mayor? Okay, thank you. Ms. Kraus, thank you very much. It looks like the end of November, or the end of the third quarter, because of our lower expenses mainly, we have a pretty strong fund balance. So what are you predicting? Do you have a forecast? And what would that forecast be if you have one about the year-end fund balance?
You know, I do not have an updated forecast. I will say that we will meet what our estimate is, but I don't have an update as of for this meeting. And that is something that I'll be putting together for the next round for a presentation with the city council.
So with the, with the improvement in the development services, besides the REIT, which has been strong, relatively strong compared to everything else, is there a lag usually then in the sales tax that we get from construction? And what kind of lag? I guess I've never really understood when sales tax is paid on construction projects.
On construction projects or just sales tax in general and the timing of when we get it? And so let's say for September, sales tax, we don't actually receive the September sales tax until end of November.
Right.
So all we have right now is just the sales tax through September. We'll have the October sales tax in a couple of weeks.
So on a lot of, but a lot of the major projects, because I, because I did what the mayor told me to do last week, which was go look at Woodbrook, and then I went out there and I was like, oh, my goodness gracious. There's like three or four major building projects going on out there. Do you, do they, do they make monthly payments on their in-progress? Or do they, when you're doing a major construction project, and let's say it's a million dollars a month? Or do they pay at the end, or do they pay at the beginning? Or how do they do that?
So the sales tax, are you talking about sales tax on the materials that they purchase for the construction?
Well, I don't even know what they pay on everything. Do they pay just on materials?
Well, for construction, it depends. There are some exceptions on the construction. I don't really have that right off the top of my head. But there are to be sales tax on the materials that are purchased, but depending on what the purchase, the materials are purchased for and what types of improvements. So if there's some road improvements, there will be some exceptions.
Okay.
Yeah.
But materials, they pay right away, right?
Yeah, it's when they purchase it. And yes.
Okay. Well, that's, that's good. So we should see a steady stream on that kind of stuff if the, all the projects keep going. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Whalen?
Quick one. Thank you. Again, thanks for the thorough update, Ms. Kraus. I just had a question. You probably don't know, but looking at the admissions tax, I mean, it's obviously significant related to the theaters in town and the Lakewood Playhouse. And do we have any sense from reaching out to RPI whether or not there's a sense of sort of financial danger for those institutions to reopen at some point or not?
I have not. I'm not sure if economic development, Becky Newton has reached out to them, but I personally or anybody in finance has not reached out to them.
Yeah, I just, it would be good maybe to reach out and see how they're doing. Maybe Becky can do that. Mr. Koff, you'll let. You know, there's concern out there that if those folks don't reopen, even when COVID passes or subsides or whatever we want to call it, that could strike a significant sort of hurt in the entertainment, lifeblood at the center of the city. And we hope that not to happen, of course, but.
That actually is a real possibility, not just in Lakewood, but nationwide. You know, the two largest movie companies are under extreme financial pressures, Regal and AMC. And, you know, we have AMC here in town. We have Regal up by 84th. What's interesting is that right before COVID, Regal was ready to move forward with some significant improvements at their facilities, but of course, they put that on pause. One bit of fresh air is, is, is in the town center, and it's an RPI tenant. Trampoline, the trampoline facility is still moving forward, and they're looking to open up sometime in 2021. So that's still, still on track. But you're right. It's highly likely that the movie industry, as we knew it prior to March of this year, is going to be a completely different environment once the dust all settles on this. So still to be determined.
At least we can jump for joy on the trampoline opportunity.
Well, to, to, to throw a little more cold water on that, I think it's Warner Brothers is the first studio to, this week, to announce that it's going to direct release all its pictures to Netflix and Amazon Prime, type of operations. So they're looking at alternative distribution to the theaters as being the norm. And so that's going to accelerate the demise of theaters, I, I suspect.
What do we know about Barnes and Noble? Have we heard anything anecdotally? Are they doing okay? Because I mean, we start taking out that whole corner.
Yeah, Barnes and Nobles, yeah, they continue. They continue to be open. Quite frankly, they are the last, one of the last major bookstores still standing. And not Barnes and Nobles as a whole, but the Barnes and Noble here in Lakewood. I think they've done a good job in adapting to the market and some of the different products, particularly with the focus on young children and with, within their, within their store. But yeah, they're still open and going strong as this, at this point in time.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, maybe it's, maybe it's hope there, but I also read Barnes and Noble has hired a new CEO who is reformatting the stores. Try a different mix than lining books up. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Brenstetter?
Thank you. Ms. Kraus, I mean, thank you for the report. It thoroughly got a lot of information as, as always. And I recognize that as a, it's, it's a, it's a third quarter report, so it's not the picture for the end of the year. But I had a couple of questions around Fund 401, which is the Surface Water Management Utility. It's page 102 of your report, 127 of the packet. The, the major revenue source there is the, are, are, are the, are the fees that property owners pay. And a number of, couple of years ago, we adjust that fee process to include an annual inflator automatically. So where we didn't just have to reset the fee every time. So I was wondering why the 2020 budget and the revised budget are actually less than the fees that were collected in 2019? Because this didn't seem to be a COVID-influenced sector of the budget.
I, if you give me just one second to take a look at that. I do not have an answer for you right now. That's something that I'm going to have to look deeper into and get back to you or get back to the city council.
And perhaps what I'm wondering is, in the budget that we just adopted, did we include a a revenue estimate that took in that, that automatic inflation formula into effect? When you get back to us, if we could look at that. I didn't pay attention to it when we were passing the biennial budget. Just sort of looked at me here. And then the, the other question that I had, or one of the other two questions that I had on this particular fund, under expenditures, under operations and maintenance, you know, we have a revised 2020 budget of $955,000, and yet a year-to-date actual of less than a third of that. And again, this is one of those things that did, did we defer some maintenance on the stormwater system? So as to why we're spending so much less on, 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 on operations and maintenance? Or did we just, with the COVID restrictions we put in place, make all those, those savings in operations administration type things?
So on the expenditure side, the budget of $955,000, that is for the operations and maintenance that is performed by our Parks Department. They also have operations and maintenance in the streets, O and M fund. So I would need to take a look at the expenditures in both of those funds. Sometimes there is work, sometimes there are positions that are budgeted in the swim fund, but they may be doing work that is not related to the swim fund and therefore may be charged elsewhere. So I will take a look at that as well.
Okay. And then the, the last part, if I could just get an understanding of down in the section where it talks about the ending fund balances. And there's a section about the different types of reserves. And it says 33% operating reserves, which is based on 33% of operating expenditures. But why is there a line that says 17% of operating reserves based on operating revenues?
So the 17% operating reserves is what the city had in place in 2018. Then we went through a rate review and beginning in 2019, based on the rate review and approved by council, the recommendation was to go with the 33% operating reserves based on expenditures. And that is equivalent to 120 days. And the reason for the higher reserves is because we only received the major revenues in about the March-April timeframe and the October-November timeframe. So it really provides some cash flow, for cash flow purposes. And so I'm showing the 17% because that's what we used to calculate and the reserves that we needed for 2018, but beginning in 2019 and moving forward, it's 1% of operating expenditures.
And that's 17% is, it's just historical. It's no, not current.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Any other questions? Ends up, don't see any. Thank you very much, Ms. Kraus. Then we'll move on to the next item of the agenda, the Special Events and Public Art Update with Ms. Martinez. She's thawed out yet. Good evening. You have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I hope you are all recovered from that cold, chilly, amazing night we had. I am thrilled to be here presenting on a recap of our 2020 events and looking forward to what 2021 looks like with COVID and our plans for the different phases. Also, I'll be presenting briefly on the public art at Colonial Plaza. I'd like to start this by saying that this is my favorite presentation of the year because it's my opportunity to look back and reflect. And I was out paddling my Outrigger canoe on American Lake the other day, and I was telling Mary I was just noticing all the reflections. And I thought, what if we lived in a world that didn't have reflections? We just take them for granted. And the same is true in our lives. We get so busy. We don't take the time to often reflect. And this presentation really forces me to do that. And we get to look back, all of us tonight, and really look at it from a participant's point of view, where all the works aside, and we just get to revel in the sheer joy of what we can bring to this community. I'm going to share my screen with you. Actually, I'm going to go back one. And so just to check in, can you see this? Okay? So to begin, I just want to set the groundwork that when we plan our events, we do it within a framework. Our team has a framework which is based on equity and access. And we make sure when we were planning our events that we keep top of mind always accessibility in terms of affordability. So can all socioeconomic levels come to the event? And is it accessible to people of all ages? Is there something for everyone to do, from toddlers to seniors? Are people of all cultures welcome? And is there something that they can relate to? And all abilities? Can people of all abilities access it and find their way through the event? And then secondly, the framework is based on memories, and it is a judge of how well we do. We say, are people going to remember this event five years from now? And are they going to remember it 10 years from now? Not six months from now, but 10 years from now. And if we can say yes, then we know we're planning the right event. So I'm going to start with the farmer's market, which was considered essential. So this is in my journal of my highlights of COVID-19. A farmer's market was a go for sure because it's considered essential. It's a place for people to shop and get fresh produce. And the only difference was that we had to space the vendors out 10 feet apart. So we needed to double our footprint, which was not possible at our traditional location at City Hall. What was amazing is it really forced us to change. I love change. Our team loves change. And we were able to change the date, time, and location of this event. And there's that saying, why change something if it's going well? Well, we never would have changed it probably if this hadn't happened and we weren't forced to. But what happened is it doubled the attendance. I'm going to go back one. We did a clicker count on the second day of the market, and we counted 5,000 people. An average day at City Hall was about 1,500 people. So it's just a bigger space at Port Silicon Park that can accommodate more people. And Fridays were just a fun day. People were done with their week. They could shop for the weekend. The time was 2:30 to 6:30, so people could come after work, which they, there was a whole population of people that couldn't attend our Tuesday morning market. And so we also had to educate people about COVID, and I'm just going to play this quick video. So we're just blessed to have Fort Silicon Park, that enormous area with unlimited free parking, unlimited space. I just couldn't have asked for a better venue, especially in a time when many farmer's markets couldn't survive because they simply didn't have the space to expand. So what did it require? It required all new signage, which is great. It's fun. We had a new, fresh logo. We educated our vendors as well as the shoppers with signage because creating a safe atmosphere was key to people coming, not only once, but coming back, which they did. They felt very safe there. We had our signs. And, you know, we had fun with it. We had to put dots out that measured six feet, and these are the interns measuring with. So he's six feet tall. All right. So we leveraged partnerships. We got three interns from the University of Puget Sound. They worked 30 hours a week. And we had volunteers that helped every day. Farmer's markets are really labor-intensive, but we did it, we really saved money by going this route. And then we incorporated new, fresh advertising, and our interns did this as well. We coined Food Truck Fridays to get people to come after work. And even if they weren't going to shop, they could come grab dinner and sit out and have a picnic dinner. And we did cross-promotion with our drive-in movies. So we had a brand-new audience come to our drive-in movies. We could promote the farmer's market. And they could also come and enjoy the food trucks from the market and have dinner before the movie. We implemented our Healthy Bucks, which is on its fourth year. And 2,500 children ate fresh fruits and veggies at the market, thanks to CHI-Francoise Health, who sponsored the Healthy Bucks. And here you can just see a sample of one family using their Healthy Buck to get fresh fruits and vegetables. We spend a lot of time gathering data, which helps us with our marketing and helps with our price points and educating our vendors about what to sell. And you can see here that the 31- to 60-year-old crowd was the most popular, which is younger than previous years due to, I believe, the new date, time, and location. And then the average customer spending stayed about the same. It was $15 to $25. And at the breakdown in the vendors by sales was, you can see the farmers had the most, and then it was the food trucks. This is just a Wordle that was from our survey that is straight from our participants who come to the farmer's market saying what they loved about the new location. And you can see location is in big letters. They thought it was great. They liked the choices, that it was very organized, and a big success. So looking forward to 2021 with COVID, we get to have the market no matter what. So we're actually extending the season. It's going to be a new 20-week season instead of our typical 12-week season. It'll be Thursday nights from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. at Port Silicon Park. And of course, we have the wonderful Colonial Plaza Market, and we're exploring options for perhaps doing one day a month where we have a farmer's market at the Colonial Plaza and bring shopping downtown. Moving on to the summer, we'll have our summer nights at the Pavilion. We'll have a series of seven concerts on Thursday nights following the farmer's market. So again, we can capitalize on the farmer's market attendees. People can shop at the market, stay, grab some food, and then go to the summer concert series. It's just a wonderful event. As you know, it brings the community together and accessible for people of all ages, of all abilities, and all cultures. The wonderful thing is it can take place in Phase Three or Four of COVID. In Phase Three, it's 250 people. We have so much space that we can market out. We can create squares for families to stay within, and everyone can feel safe. We can also have the ability for people to reserve time slots if needed. And everyone loves to dance, so we really want to keep that going. New this year, we implemented drive-in movies. All three sold out. It's a huge hit. We showed Grease, and we showed the Sandlot, and then we were going to show Coco, but it rained. And then we were going to show Coco, but it rained. So in 2021, it's a go. It's not affected by COVID. This is a great, something that we can absolutely rely on. And we're planning an eight-week series on Friday nights, June through August. I'm supplementing this by finding sponsors. And Twin Star Credit Union has already offered to sponsor two of the movies. Summer Fest was canceled. We're on such a roll, but we're looking forward to planning for 2021. And just to refresh our memories, I want to show this quick commercial.
Join in the excitement of Lakewood Summer Fest, Saturday, July 13th. Last year, over 40,000 people enjoyed the extreme entertainment, including stilt walkers, trail motocross show, and hot air balloon blow. It's a free festival at Fort Silicon Park with two stages. Live music features The Infinity Project, Washington Black, Aphrodisiacs, and Chapter Five. Enjoy over 30 food vendors, classic car show, and three outdoor movies. Make Summer Fest July 13th a family tradition.
So we look forward to doing that again in 2021. And if we need to, with COVID, we can create a three-day event. It allows for social distancing. Again, in Phase Three, we can have 250 people per time slot. We have new fencing and that we can set up different areas so people feel safe and they can reserve time slots. We have plenty of space to social distance and divide areas up, so we're very fortunate. We would continue to have the Sister Cities International Festival, which has so greatly increased the diversity of this festival. And we'll continue to have the Wow Factor. These are just key elements I'm talking about with Summer Fest that we will always want to keep. The Wow Factor with our local X Games celebrities, our attractions for teens, our passport to sports that had up to 24 sports to keep people active and help them find their passion in sport that they may not even have realized they had. And I'll work hard on sponsorship so we can make it as wonderful as it can be. Truck and tractor day takes place in the fall. We didn't have it this year. Instead, we had the movie Coco. And although it was canceled, people could come to the farmer's market, which preceded the movie, and pick up their pumpkin and decorating kit and their popcorn. And then we are, to the present, the 2020 Rivers Parade. It was a first event. It attracted thousands of people, as you saw. And. A huge part of that was our partnership with the school district. They had the most amazing display and they were able to advertise this to all their families. I was telling Mary, it's the only event that I really didn't advertise. I think I paid $100 for social media advertising. So extremely low-cost event, but such a big turnout. And I wanted to thank everyone, the mayor, city council members for being there, for being hands-on for this first-time event. And you could see firsthand the joy on the people's faces despite waiting an hour and a half or two hours in their car. They were so thrilled. And it just goes to show that this really brought cheer in a dark time for people. Otherwise, I think they would have not been so happy, but they, they were thrilled to get out of the house and to feel that Christmas spirit and you brought to them. So thank you so much. For next year, 2021, for Phase Four, we'll plan our traditional event with our fun run, our parade as a normal parade, and our vendors and entertainment and the tree lighting. And if it's a Phase Three, sorry, I'm going to go back. If it's a Phase Three, then we'll do it just like we did this last weekend. So the 2021, moving forward, we're going to have the 25th anniversary of the city's 25th anniversary. And we're recommending the theme of unity, celebrating the coming together of our diverse community. And this is a theme that we are hoping to really integrate into all of our events. The first of which would be our MLK event, which is taking place Thursday, January 14th. This is going to be a virtual event. We cannot have people come together at this time. But as you can see, the unity and community is highlighted. The program itself is the, are that we've asked people to make inspirational, say inspirational messages. And we have youth council members saying inspirational messages. And we have community leaders saying unification messages. So what we decided to do in February is kind of a soft launch for the city's anniversary because we can't get together, we thought we'd have an art contest. This is something that can be shown virtually and we can have monetary prizes. Thanks to Twin Star Credit Union, who donated $1,700. We can have a first, second, and third place for every age group. And the theme, the two themes are unity and love Lakewood. We plan on kicking this off tomorrow. And I wanted to say that Hank from the, Hank Jones from the Youth Council thought of this theme, unity. I asked the Youth Council members to send ideas to me. And he says unity means coming together as a community. And I think that this is an awesome narrative for the celebrations of our city's 25th birthday. And you know, Claudia Thomas, who was a founding member of the City Council, council 25 years ago, had a familiar quote. So it just goes to show that what was true 25 years ago still rings true today. And then in the summer, we hope to have a live event at the Colonial Plaza. And it would have, we'd have a reverse game night, or retro game night, sorry, with games, you know, that were popular 25 years ago. We would have music and a food truck and perhaps an unveiling of the public art. Before I go on to the public art presentation, are there any questions?
Any questions for Sally? I have to flip screens back and forth here because in the mode I'm in, I don't see any hands up. Mr. Whalen.
Sally, great work on many of the events. Obviously, you've got a good team together and Youth Council's done some fun work as well. Just on the farmer's market, again, I was very impressed with the change that you guys adapted to the Friday afternoon because it was successful in part because of the location, but also the date and time. So going from a Friday to a Thursday, I'm not opposed to for sure, but were you getting some good feedback from the vendors that Thursday was going to be a better day than Friday? Because we had a successful Friday.
Good question. Thank you. We love to have it Friday, but we have baseball tournaments on Fridays. So it's not possible to do it there on Fridays. And Thursdays, I did query all of the vendors and Thursday works fine for them.
And then we're going to go into, you know, it extended into about seven o'clock timeframe on Friday, right? And so that's why we captured a lot of folks after work. Here, we're only going to go to six. Was there some method to that madness?
Well, one was that it just slowed down. It slowed down greatly in that last hour. And actually, people were coming earlier. They were kind of coming over the lunch hour. They were coming while people were getting set up. So I saw this trend that people, yeah, were coming earlier and leaving earlier. So, you know, we can be adaptable and nimble. I'm not opposed to that at all. In fact, the reason we extended the season to October is a gentleman just came up in September and said, hey, why don't you stay open longer? We'd all like that to happen. And I said, you know, I'll look into it. And a week later, we'd had plans to stay open through the third week in October. So we can certainly adapt.
Right. And you don't see the Colonial Center as a, as a large enough venue to hold it there sort of full-time in the summer as opposed to the park?
Could you say that again?
Sure. The Colonial Center, is it not a sufficient venue to do it every week? Do you think it's just too small based on the crowds you received this last summer?
Yes, size is an issue and parking is an issue.
Okay. Sounds good.
But we do definitely hope to use it, you know, ideally once a month. And that'll also give us a better idea of how, how it translates into a functioning, busy market.
Maybe more of an evening market or something like that.
Absolutely.
Any other questions for Ms. Martinez? Don, Mr. Bulkey?
Thank you. Hey Sally, good, good job on all this stuff. I want to touch on the farmer's market and this is maybe a bigger question. But, but, you know, we were late to the party on farmer's market. I mean, there was a lot of farmer's markets out there and we started doing the Mondays or Tuesday afternoons. And, and now it seems like we've been able to convert to Fridays, which is really cool. Explain, besides great staff, you know, do we have a solid position in the farmer's market world with the vendors? I mean, I kind of gather there's a pecking order in farmer's markets, right? They want to go to where it's busiest and various things like that. So where are we in your mind in this pecking order? And how did we, how did we get there? I mean, because I think we've made great strides.
Yeah, that's very insightful because your market depends on your vendors. And from what I've learned is vendors are very loyal to the market manager. And. Oftentimes, if a market manager changes and they don't like the manager, they'll actually leave. So it can be a fickle group. And like you said, there are so many other markets. But the feedback I got this summer was phenomenal. They said that they made more money in our market the first day than they did in all of their other markets. They did, their sales were so high, they doubled over last year. And they were just thrilled about that. Secondly, they gave me tremendous, wonderful feedback about how we handled COVID, that some of the other market managers were just being so militant about their, how they perform, how they set up, how their safety. And, you know, they said it's just so unfun that they left. And they won't go back to that market. So we're just getting so much incredible, wonderful feedback. I can't tell you the positive feedback I get from the vendors. So I do, because it is always a little bit nerve-wracking, like, okay, what vendors am I getting? And then they also are spreading the word among their, among their friends. So I had a lot of vendors come from other markets that their friend vendors told them to come to Lakewood because it's just like a family.
Good, good, great. And I mean, I'm glad to hear that because I've wondered, it seems like, you know, we've, it's always been good in my mind. I think that the, the market always runs well and we had cool ideas. And maybe that's since come to fruition over the years. And even when I was at the City Hall and the space constraints were, were a little tougher. But it just seems to have grown over the years. And I, and, but I know we were, again, we're the latecomer and we're trying to get into that group. And, and it just seems like when I went over there this year, it really worked at the park for the COVID thing in my mind because you could keep people separate. You could keep moving in. I think you had them going and we had to go in a certain direction. And it just kind of was a smart way to do it, I thought. And I'm, I'm glad it worked for the vendors also. I want to say I'm amazed at this mea culpa. That I'm saying this in front of the council too. So let me tell you a personal story on, on company time. My wife had to work at the booth, at the school district booth, and she had cleanup duty. And I asked her, well, what time do you have to be there? She said eight o'clock. And I said, well, it starts at six. And she said, yeah. And I said, there won't be that many people there. Everyone will be gone by eight o'clock. I mean, I was, I convinced myself, I was like, how many people are going to show up to this thing? Because there wasn't that much publicity. And there we were at nine o'clock. And the cars were still coming. I just found it absolutely fantastic and all the little kids that everybody brought. It was just incredible. And, and I'm glad I was wrong on that. I just, it was, it was just a great event and I'm glad that it worked out so well. Because I think it was really important for the community to kind of get out. I just loved the little kids and how excited they were, right? So it was, it was great. So thank you. Good job.
Yeah, no, and I understand, you never know with a first-time event. And I had my misgivings. The day before, I suddenly had my pre-event panic and thought, what if none of the floats show up? And I started madly calling everyone because you just don't know. And it's very front-facing, so if you flop, it's a very visible flop. And, but what I've learned is if you have the right intention behind the event, the intention to bring the community together, it's just like magic. It really is.
Any other questions? Looking back and forth. Well, thank you, Sally. As you know, this is the second time that I've seen the presentation except for the tail end. And it gives me even more reason to be optimistic about community participation in 2021. So thanks for your hard work and adaptation in difficult times. It's, it doesn't go unnoticed and it certainly is appreciated by the greater community. So if, if we could create the smile, the smiles on the kids' faces that we saw the other night, it's worth standing out the cold for three and a half hours. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. And now I'll present on the public art at Colonial Plaza. Our artist Perry Howard has resigned and we have three options for moving forward. The staff's recommendation is option number one, which is to use the current design, which we own and have paid for, and have contractors design or implement, create and implement it. And those contractors would include, for example, foundries and electricians and so on that need to come together to build it. The positive of this option is that it would be done much quicker than option two and could possibly be done within six months. And most likely would come in slightly under budget. Option two and three are to use the current design. Or sorry, to create a new design. And there are two ways to do that. The first is to use one of the runner-ups that we vetted in the first round. And to pay them a $500 stipend to present a new design, which we would give them very specific guidance on. And the second way of doing that is to use an artist roster, start fresh with the artists that are vetted through these two public artist rosters that exist. In that case, it would take a year and the full amount of the budget. Are there any questions?
Questions? Mr. Whalen, I'm surprised.
Yeah, you're surprised, I'm sure. I got all sorts of questions. So I'm not opposed, Sally, to maybe proceeding with the current design because it has been vetted by the Arts Commission. I think we can tweak it a little bit if need be, meaning water, no water, more interesting lighting features in lieu of water. We can talk about that with regard to the budget. You know, the interesting question with regard to a public art project is whose name goes on it, right? So yeah, we bought the design from Perry Howard, but we put on the thing at the end of the day, you know, designed by Perry Howard or designed by a committee of camels. You know, at the end of it, which is fine as long as it looks good and, you know, it's got some substance to it and it resembles what roughly the Arts Commission recommended to us when we adopted. What's your thought on that?
Yeah, so a couple of things. So I did a lot of research and talked on the phone quite extensively with the City of Tacoma's Public Art. And regarding water, they said they actually no longer will install any artwork with water because it's so expensive and the maintenance is because it's so expensive and the maintenance is, uh, the maintenance is so expensive and, uh, time consuming. When I presented to the Arts Commission last week, Susan Warner, who's an art curator and worked for the Museum of Glass, said they had a big, uh, water sculpture in front of the museum of glass. Well, it's still there, but it's actually defunct because it's so expensive, they can't even fix it because the water feature broke. So it's just sitting there and is defunct. And then Patty Bella works for the City of Kent, who's on our Arts Commission, said that it's true. Also, City of Kent is not adding any more water features, uh, artwork with water features because of the expense. Um, and like you said, lighting can, um, uh, take place in lieu of that and is an inexpensive option. And whose name is on it? Yes. So there, uh, the response to that is, uh, the City of Tacoma, it's a best practice for them. They, they would not ever actually, um, go forward with a piece of artwork where the artist resigned. And that was echoed with, by Susan Warner, who said, what happens is that the artwork can lose its integrity and it's an original intention. When someone else is actually building it and putting it together, because you can only tell so much by these sketches and these drawings. But then, um, that's for the city council to ponder.
It's a little challenging to ponder. I mean, I had the opportunity because I was down meeting with the guy at Two Ravens and happened to say, oh, by the way, I'm bidding on, uh, the components of the project for Lakewood. I said, Ray, great. So, you know, if anyone can get you a number, those guys can get you a number. I don't know if they ever came back with a number on the steel component of it yet. But I, I am concerned about losing the integrity of, quote unquote, a public art piece, right? As opposed to one that's been put together by a little bit by us, a little bit by Public Works, a little bit by the Parks Department, a little bit of design by the artist. But that's just me. I'm fine with going forward with it as long as it looks good, but it's hard for any of us to look at a two dimensional thing without the artist's integrity into the whole of the project and figure out what it's really going to look like. Buying substituting really good lighting for water, if that's what the council wants to do. The whole thought was to have some movement in those pieces, right? Either with water coming down or whatever. And I think you can make some shimmery stuff go on with some good LED lighting. It would be a lot less expensive and easier to maintain. So that's my, hit the input.
Okay. Yeah. Two Ravens did say that the color, they would not recommend the color because it cheapens it. It makes it look a little more plasticky and they would uh, recommend like a sterling silver, like just a beautiful piece of jewelry for each of the pods.
Yeah, like stainless, it's highly polished stainless.
Correct.
And that's, that was one of Perry's initial thoughts, uh, when she came forward with the initial design when we went. So I think that would be consistent with her design thought. So, you know. Did we get a bid on that though?
We got a bid of, it's not a complete bid, but they came in at $85,000, not including the stone or water, a water portion feature.
So you dump the water, you could probably get the stone for another 10 or so. I'd look at Maranacos of the Fall City because they do that work. They can interface with it.
So Sally, what was our, you said that we own it, that we had, obviously had a contract with the artist for the design. Was there a separate contract for the construction?
Yeah.
Was it awarded?
It was signed off and then, uh, she's, they've been working with Heidi, the city attorney to, uh, and they've officially, uh, made that null and void.
Actually, yes.
I'm sorry, Mayor. Um, yeah, there was one contract with the artist for $100,000, which was all, which was all inclusive. So the artist was responsible for bringing in all the various contractors to complete the project. And out of that $100,000, the city paid the artist, uh, $5,000 for the design. So that's why we now own the design. So there's $95,000 in funding available to.
That was, that was settled for ownership and the track was revoked.
Affirmative.
Okay. Any other comments?
Hey, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Reshider.
I guess that I, in, in, in terms of my preference on these options, I would rather, I'm, I much prefer option two or three than getting a group of craftspeople to assemble something against a design on paper without the artist being there. I think the comments about that, you know, the, the, the spirit of a piece of art and an artist being there, uh, you know, working with the folks that are putting it together, uh, is important. And I do think that if like, if we went with option three and we asked artists to resubmit some designs with some revised guidance, we selected the, this, this particular artist that is now not going to finish this work. And we, we selected this artist based on artists that submitted the design based on a $50,000 budget, not a $100,000 budget. And we increased the budget later so that this artist could move forward and develop it. And I think that we could get an artist that would commit to being engaged with the process, give us something that goes with our spirit that can, you know, the, the, the spirit that we're talking about for this year about right unity was one of the things that was kind of something we were hoping to see in a, in a, in an artwork. And, um, the fact that it'll take a year instead of six months, uh, given how long we expect it to last, I think, uh, that we, we, we would be, I think, better off, uh, going and asking a group of artists to say now, what can you do with $95,000 as opposed, uh, this time and, 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 and get what we want? So I would be, uh, I probably, my preference is probably option three, although I'd be okay with option two and I'm least okay with option one.
Anyone else want to chime in? Uh, can't see everybody at the same time with this screen sharing, so bear with me. See, I'm, I'm kind of the opposite view. I'd say go with one, option one and finish it or can the thing and buy something off the shelf. I've, I've kind of had it up to here with dealing with temperamental artists who have to control everything from the grave. Don't worm, uh, want to tell you what you can and can't do after you install it. Uh, it's, uh, buy, buy a statue somebody's already cast and put it up. It's, uh, it's frustrating to chase our tail for so many months, had so much input and then say, oh, never mind. We flushed $5,000 down the toilet because somebody won't perform their contract and we're, let's do it again.
Mayor, I, I just have one thing that I wanted to add. And that is that the City of Tacoma's, uh, Public Art Department, they do contract out and we could contract with them for 10 to 15% of the project cost. And I just wanted to say that, uh, public art, working with artists, like you said, it is a, a specialty unto itself and these, the staff members there have been doing it for years. And it's so in depth. It's like you don't know what you don't know until you don't know it. And they know all these nuances. And I do believe, you know, moving forward, just keeping that top of mind, that in the long run, it could save a lot of time contracting with them because they have this tried and true process. And so at least our staff learns the ins and outs.
Any else?
Doesn't look like that on the screen at the end of the day, but.
Maybe if we could remove the screen sharing so that the council could maybe have a discussion on what, there we go, what consensus they want to have. Turn it back to you, Mayor, in terms of what direction you'd like to give us to. Again, the recommendation is to move forward with building the art as, as designed.
What else?
I'll.
Ms. Farmer.
Mr. Mayor, I, I wasn't here for the beginning of this project, so I don't, I don't have all the perspective that, that the other council members do. But it feels like, it feels to me like there's a, a bad taste in our mouth and that we would be, I don't know, I just, I'm not feeling that we would be completely happy with having somebody else build this. Build, build these pieces of art and do we add the water? Don't we? And I, I understand the the frustration. I've, I've been at a, at a spot where, where you've worked for a very long time. Uh, the situation got a little untenable and then you had to start from scratch and that's very frustrating. So I, I, I do understand that, but I'm wondering if that isn't the best thing to do. I, I think I'm, I'm, I'm resonating with what Councilmember Branstadder is saying is that we might, we have the budget, it's taken us this long. I just, it would be nice to have something we could all feel a little bit happier about. It is public art after all, which is, which is a difficult thing. Art, art is difficult. That's my thought.
One of the other things you could do is do a small version of Dubai and you only have a dances and kids.
I'm having trouble hearing you.
Said, uh, you could do like Dubai and only, the art is the water feature. Or you, you have a splash park for kids that pops up and flashes and put a hundred grand toward Splash Park.
I do have to say that, that, um, I was connected to the City of Tacoma when they, when they have that, uh, water feature put in in front of the Museum of Glass and it, it had a whole bunch of problems. The, the water was kind of the least of their problems. It was skinny things and people were knocking them over. And so it, it had a lot of issues. It wasn't, it wasn't just the water, but, um, but I love the idea of a usable public, public art project, spray park, that sort of thing.
Anybody else? I don't know. We have a consensus. Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand your frustration with artists. And I, I, I don't like it when we're told or pushed around on things. But that said, there's an opportunity here, as Mr. Branstadder was hinting at, that, um, maybe we back up. We do this our way. We do it the way we want it. We have the public input with it. And if it takes a year or longer, then we do it, but we make something lasting, which is, I think, part of what unity is all about. So I would tend to favor what Mr. Branstadder and Ms. Farmer have articulated thus far. Thank you.
Fine with going back to the drawing board, but I think we have to have, I like the concept of unity. We can tweak the theme a little bit. But I would direct this back to the arts with very brief instructions to engage either the last uh, four or five runners up who submitted projects. You can open it up if you want, but I think we got to kind of move the ball forward a little bit with the idea that a, a new design and plan is provided sometime by March. You know, no later than March sometime gives us a short, maybe month of a couple of study sessions if we needed to review and approve a final design. And I think we can get this thing built in six months. And I do a fair amount of work with artists. I represent a number of them. Our firm buys a lot of art, so I kind of understand the process. So that, that would be my thought. Send them back, uh, have them reengage with the, what was it, three or four Sally of the runners up that were pretty good. And that you can open it up if you feel like, if they feel that they don't have enough, but have them reengage or retweak with this. I like the unity theme and it makes sense for the anniversary, but I don't think we need to wait a year because otherwise a year turns into two. I'd have the goal to have this thing installed this time next year.
Please start fresh. Would you recommend asking them to include a water feature or not include a water feature?
No. If it's my preference, I love them, but I hear with what you're saying about maintenance, as long as we can have some good lighting, it gives movement to the peak somehow. So it captures attention as you drive by Bridgeport or Gravel Lake Drive. I personally am fine with that, but I'm just one voice on that. I love water. I got a lot of water features, but you have to maintain them. I get it.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
John, Sally, I have a question for you. Were any of the art submissions we looked at prior, were any of them from the Nisqually tribe?
Yeah.
Good. Glad to hear that. Thank you.
We had one from the tribe. I didn't think so.
I didn't think so either, but that's why I asked.
Yeah, there was one from a gentleman that was, uh, involved with the tribe, I believe.
Yeah, it wasn't like five per se.
Oh, right. He was a tribal member.
He was or wasn't?
Was.
Okay. All right. All right. Thank you.
I'd be very interested in native art as a possibility, but I'd be very careful that it is a native artist. And even more sensitive on where they came from unless you have collaboration with locals. You don't want to cling it. Building a totem pole in Nisqually's territory. Uh, so there's some politics to that, that have to be carefully plotted out.
And this gentleman was not in the top three, you know, he was not in the top three.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you can hear me.
Ms. Moss.
Thank you. I don't know. I'm, I'm off of my laptop tonight, so I can't, I'm not maneuvering very well, but I was just wanting to hear from, uh, Deputy Mayor Whalen, uh, or Sally about the water feat, the light water feature. How would, it was my impression of that. I'm not an artist, so my impression of that would be like have something water that looks, the light that looks like water coming down or something of that nature. Is that what I'm hearing?
I think my thought when we were discussing alternatives was to have the design we had existing where the boulders, right? Large rock boulders that were core drilled on one side where water would either bubble up against the steel and kind of bubble down. Uh, and then the other side, there was not water. It was static. The smaller side that's closest to the building, the round building, that's going to be the PT therapy place, right? So in lieu of water coming up the core drilled rock, you could have just the light, uh, where they still do the core drilling, but you're bringing your tube LED light up there and it would be on, you know, they have the different lights that can flicker like candles. And that was part of the thought with those reeds looking a little bit like a flame would be beckoning into the Colonial Center is the entrance way to the plaza there. So you can do some light flickering that looks, it has movement. It doesn't necessarily look like water, but it provides some movement up against the, yeah.
Okay. Well, I, I agree with, I did, number one was not my first choice. I didn't vote for number one in the beginning, so I, that's not my choice.
It looks like we have a consensus to move on to something new. So, uh, maybe we can move on to the next agenda item and see how we're going to handle that. There's Martinez.
Well, just a quick question. Uh, would, uh, there's the idea of contracting out with the City of Tacoma staff? Is that a consideration?
Lakewood's project, not Tacoma's, but I think we need to go to our arts. It could be Lakewood's project, not Tacoma's, but I think we need to go to our arts commission people.
Yeah, what I heard was to reopen the RFP process and perhaps start off with the existing artists. One thing to keep in mind is that well, first of all, you know, the council, you didn't like what some of those artists had proposed previously. So it is probably likely that, you know, we would open it up to all artists and get something in something else in terms of, you know, a lesson learned from the last process is to get this body involved early on in the review process with the Arts Commission as opposed to a more linear process. And we can bring back to you some ideas on how to best facilitate that as well.
We could pursue that on a parallel track so that we get input laterally from the art from the Arts Commission instead of linearly.
Right.
All right.
Wonderful.
Give you some guidance.
Wonderful. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Your presentation, I take it.
And then we heard no water feature, including bubbling up from the rocks.
Maybe I'll have water coming down on your rocks independently.
But six, eight months a year, we have natural water feature.
This better have good lighting.
It's ecologically sound. We're using recycled rainwater.
A non-beverage feature.
I'll move on now to South Sound Housing Affordability Partnership update from Ms. Spear. Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Again, good work on the event this week for all the kiddies.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm going to share my screen as well, just for a brief presentation here. So the last time I was in front of you, I can't remember who it was, your last meeting or the meeting prior, but there was an introduction of the South Sound Housing Affordability Partners and an introduction of some of the items that they're currently considering in terms of formalizing as a group and then going forward, what types of work it would perform on a regional basis. So coming back to you this evening, just an update on that information I provided before and also letting you know what the next steps are for the group. So as I mentioned, in 2019, this group began to meet under the name Mayor's Roundtable Housing Affordability and the impacts on our community. And now it's reamed South Sound Housing Affordability Partners. Here's the list once more of those that have been involved on a regular basis. The founders of the group were the executive Dan Meyer from the county, council member Connie Lattenberg and Tacoma Mayor Woodards. And then a number of others, as you see here on the screen, have been involved. On December 2nd was the last time the steering committee meeting happened. And then December 7th, a week ago, there was a full group meeting where the following items were discussed. What would shapes value proposition be? What would be the key elements for an interlocal agreement that would formalize the group? How would it function potentially as an administrative agency separate and apart from the current elected leadership? Or with them becoming a oversight group to maybe some professional staff that would be hired? What ideas might be folded into a work plan? A frequently asked questions document that could be circulated to governments first and foremost, deciding if they wanted to participate in shape and or any members of the public who are wondering what this group was. And then also some budget options, some of which were discussed with this council that last meeting I was before you. After the discussion on December 7th, the group as a whole agreed to the suggestions that were included in those materials and all of these were included in your packet for this evening. And the consultant Cedar River Group was asked to actually put together a draft in a local agreement that the group will begin to consider in early 2021. So the next time this group is going to meet will be in January. And the idea is that information will be coming to Lakewood City Council either at your own request or at the invitation of shape proponents. And that at some point in the first quarter of next year, there'll be a request for Lakewood to I'm sorry, the Lakewood City Council to review this and make the decision to support this group continue moving forward and formalizing or in some other format and also figuring out an interlocal agreement that the city might sign on to. The intention by the current work plan or or milestone plan is that by mid 2021, shape would become a formal entity with whatever participants would be involved and then would begin working toward a work, an annual work plan and potentially the eventual creation of a capital plan where housing units were actually solicited by shape. So this is just a summary again of what I was just saying, essentially moving from the informal to a formal model is what was blessed basically on December 7th. Looking at the budget scenarios, identifying the administering agency, looking for shape support in first quarter 2021, drafting that ILA and completing it, securing approval for that. And then looking at hiring an executive manager and potentially another half FTE is what's been discussed. Looking at implementation of that work plan, creating an external community advisory board for subject matter experts to help inform what shape would do. Looking at key performance indicators and then looking at the next phase of growth. And again, that idea of a potential capital fund or the or what are in mind of the current folks involved for the years 2021 and 22. If the city council wants to do so, just know that available to you would be representatives from the shape elected group as well as the Cedar River Group consultants to bring information to you and provide you more detail and answer questions that you may have. And as far as who the consultants is, Cedar River Group is the group that's been hired by shape. They have experience and John Howell, in particular, the lead facilitator has experience dealing with affordable housing issues for decades in the region. Worked with both Arch and Skip, who are the two groups that are being used as models at this point for shape as well as a number of other groups within King and Pierce County as well as Snohomish. Arch, just very quickly, has been around since 1992 in the east side of King County. And between then and now, they've done a number of housing policy and strategy work. They've worked on actually providing new units and they are also at this point staffed by an office, an executive officer with six other staff. Skip is a much more recent entity. It's still figuring out exactly what it's going to be doing over time. They just recently agreed to use their collective $1406 to begin to support the group and potentially create a capital fund. Skip is hosted by the city of Auburn, similar to how Lakewood hosts hosts the South Sound Military and Communities Partnership. So the skip staff sit at the Auburn City Hall. And then Mayor Nancy Backas from Auburn is involved in both skip up there, but also in the shape group that's here in Pierce County. So I'll stop sharing there and just see if there's any questions. Otherwise, more to come in 2021.
See any hands up? As you indicated, more to come in 2021. I would note that maybe early on rather than later be suggest, you suggested that there's an easy out on the ILA. That this many people, somebody's going to not want to be participant going down the line and future councils need to not only just Lakewood, but all future councils need the option of retreating.
So Mayor.
Mr. Bulkey.
Yeah, I gotta, I'm still not getting it. What they're trying to do in relation to what other housing groups already do. So so I mean, we got Pierce County Housing Authority, Tacoma Housing Authority. The county gets 2016, 2163 money. There's various other housing groups that do housing. So I'm not understanding. I guess I need to know what skipping, you mentioned Arch and they've been doing it a while, I guess. I just don't know the, I guess I don't understand the end game here. What there is the is the idea just to create have a group of people to get together to talk about housing problems and then somehow work outside the the current structure to build things because the current structure isn't working. So is it? Is this, is this, are these discussions a result that we're all just kind of admitting that the way we try to build low income housing now just has not worked. And so we need to kind of create another group without killing these other groups. I guess I don't, I'm I'm the more I look at, the more lost I really am. I don't, I don't get it.
I think that has to be to some that shared it out in the ILA. I apologize for not being able to attend the the last meetings. And so I haven't seen the whatever twists and turns happen lately. Early on, there was a consensus that you can't build your way out of it. It's got to be a public private partnership. And the idea was to coordinate jurisdictions, codes and processes to facilitate affordable housing development. Use, exchange best practices, operate together to solicit grants or coordinate pool, pool funding for projects that were deemed advantageous to the county as a whole, present a unified front to the legislature, those kind of things that you know, you've cited the many, some of the many sources, but you know, we have CDBG funds, others don't. What seed money, what financing sources are available? You know, there's some suggestion to use this as a vehicle to facilitate the consolidation of the Pierce County Housing Authority and the Tacoma Housing Authority. Which frankly, the HUD director, who's going to be leaving in a couple of weeks because he's a political appointee, said it was ironic that his best housing authority and worst housing authority were next to each other. And so that's another thing that the group together can help, that it could help facilitate. So kind of variety of ideas to coordinate rather than compete. And there are some things, for example, that, you know, one thing was brought up early was that, you know, if there's a niche that not everybody is the same, but if there's different niches, people can satisfy. For example, Puyallup has senior condominium type housing. Sumner doesn't. So Sumner residents moved to Puyallup for that, but does it make sense for Sumner to replicate that? Or should they coordinate with Puyallup? Anyway, this spirit can probably fill in some of the blanks that are more current.
Well, quickly, I had some of the same confusion, looking at this from a staff perspective as well, because we have the agencies and organizations that are not government organizations working on housing, obviously within our area and within our region. And so is this trying to replicate what's already there? But also how do you do regional housing when you have autonomous governments throughout the county and throughout the state for that matter, right? I had a special discussion about this with the consultants as well as county staff this last week, just to try to really understand where this is going. And one thing that helped me understand it is I taking it away from, for instance, the PSRC and the PCRC. So the government, all layers of the rainbow, I think of it up to Growth Management Act, it's not really that. This is an elected body group as its leadership, whether it remains informal or if it were to formalize going forward. They can do exclusively housing advocacy in a way that a governmental agency cannot. So you could have all of the cities like they've done in 2021, send a unified message to elected leaders at the state and also federal levels to say this is our unified message about needs regarding housing. And then in terms of what the group can do as a whole, there are jurisdictions smaller than Tacoma or Lakewood in the county that at this point do not have the type of housing programs, for instance, that Lakewood has in place. And they don't have the resources to do it on their own. So the idea idea here as well is to let this entity become a resource, almost like MRSC, but specific to housing. So a city X with a population of, you know, a quarter of what Lakewood's might be could go to them and say, hey, we need to update our housing element. We need to change our policies and our code to encourage this type of housing and we need your help. And they would be able to do that with the expertise, either on staff or by pooling information from all of the jurisdictions. That may not be something Lakewood would would access on a very frequent basis because again, we're one of the largest jurisdictions already in the county with lots of resources. But that's one idea that this is a way to help those smaller jurisdictions come along. And then with skip and Arch, what they have done over time is help normalize, if you will, the policies. So as a developer walks from jurisdiction to jurisdiction and tries to figure out where they may want to build these types of units, for instance, if they're doing subsidized housing, they're not going to have unintended extra hoops to jump through because city X and city Y are doing it in such a different way because of different levels of resource. So I hope that helps a little bit. But it is still very much up in the air and the elected leaders are going to be talking more about it in January, where they want to go next.
Any other questions? Mr. Branstadter.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, and back in early December, back in the, we we did miss your your being there as the person who had been engaged in the organization as it's now structured. But I think our general consensus was we were glad you were at the table and that there were discussions going on about it. But I guess that I still thought that this seems like an organization that if you formalize it too much and if you give it authority to go with formalizing it, you end up replicating things that issue that are at some other things to do that. One of the most significant things was that shape did in the past was commissioned the study from UWT under the direction of Dr. Maderis. And Dr. Maderis's report on the status of how we're moving forward with housing in Pierce County was very comprehensive and interesting, but and it it emphasized the fact that there is a disparity between how much different communities are doing. But it also seemed to me to say while there is work to be done that Lakewood is probably ahead of many of our peers in the county in terms of what we've done and both particularly with trying to to maintain and keep existing housing and in 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 quality and being able to go and do that. And that going forward into the future, Lakewood and every other municipality is still going to have to decide on their own policies and decide on their own priorities within that broad umbrella of housing. You know, we've talked a lot about what kind of housing do we really want to do? And we're not exclusively looking at affordable housing for very low income people. We are looking at affordable housing for a much bigger range of income groups than is going on. And the one of the concepts was forming an an organization was that this has worked successfully in other regions and Arch and AHA and Skip are the the ones that were were done, but were done, but looking into it, uh, those regions that have formed those collaborations have all of the same problems that Pierce County has. I mean, what has been successful is that they've created an organization, not that they've actually made great strides in, in, in housing. So I'm, you know, would hope that when they come forward to us with a draft of, 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 of an ILA that I can really see some real value for Lakewood and not just subordinating ourselves to something that's there.
I, I don't disagree with Mr. Brownster. I, I look more to an SSMC model. But there are things that, uh, are kind of cooperative. For example, one of the barriers to a huge barrier to affordable housing is the base infrastructure cost. Uh, and developers find that it's, uh, you know, the profit point, uh, is at a higher price level and that you, uh, this doesn't make sense to do something at a lower level, even if there are uh, some incentives, tax incentives, for example. But there are areas of the county where it costs eight thousand dollars a residential unit to hook up to the sewer. Um, and so the jurisdictions that have problems like that in common are you know, Lakewood, Parkland Spanaway, uh, University Place, uh, De Pont, uh, that are relying on the same Pierce County sewer system and, and they may have an interest in four particular projects finding some sort of significant release to incentivize that. Uh, sewers as economic development.
So what, do, do you think that getting together and working together is, is is not possible under the current structure that the shape is operating under?
Pardon? No, well, I, no, I'm not saying that it's not possible. I said I was, I tended to agree with you, but I, I was viewing this more as something moving toward an SSMCP type of organization rather than interlocal agreement with staff uh, that are walk into a bureaucracy and, and you may end up with just what you described where we've created another entity and nothing changes.
Yeah, I mean, when you bring up the sewer fees, that's a, that's a good thing. I mean, we talk about the sewer fees, but you also have to keep in mind that other entities charge other fees that we don't charge. So, so, you know, my concern on all these things is that we, we end up with everything, right? We, we're, we're the guys that, oh, our sewer fees are way too high. Well, other people charge sewer fees, but then they charge traffic impact fees, park impact fees, school impact fees and charge a lot more on their, their thing. You know, for instance, what does Gig Harbor charge? So, you know, we're already at the lowest. So, so what exactly? You know, I don't, I don't want to get in negotiations where we're where we're already the lowest and we're trying to figure out how we can go lower so that we can be the lowest still. Right? I, I mean, I gue- I guess it, it's if these other guys aren't, if they're not willing to come down, then we shouldn't be willing to go lower. It is what I'm saying. So we either add impact fees to match them, parks impact fees especially, or they drop theirs, right? We can't do school impact fees the way the laws are written right now. So I mean, I, I, I guess when, when you talk about those kinds of things, it's like, well, and I'm not sure that I want to be there.
Well, it's, it was a thinking in the context of conjunction with jurisdictions coming together to eliminate those barriers together collectively, not just the sewer fee, not just in Lakewood.
Okay.
Here, here's what, if for this type of development or this type of project or this type of grant from the state, we will provide an incentive which really makes it worth a public, uh, private developers' while to pursue a project. Um, and, or at least explore whether that's a possibility. What we know now is that the hodgepodge of incentives doesn't do anything. It, it can potentially raise the cost of, uh, a development by requiring, uh, affordable units which drive the other part of the price points up for other tenants and it, you know, so. So I think it's worth exploring, but we'll sign on if it looks like a good deal. I mean, that's a different question.
Okay, cool.
If we sidetracked him, Miss Spear, and you have other pearls of wisdom, please chime in.
No, that was it. That was it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, and I'm sorry to do this, but I just want to say thank you to Mr. Simpson. I won't get the chance to see him before he leaves. So thank you very much, sir, for your service.
Thank you very much. It was nice of you to say.
All right, then, uh, leave, we are on to reports by the city manager, Mr. Coffield.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. I think you probably heard by now that, uh, first shipment of COVID nineteen vaccinations, vaccines rather, have come into Washington State. It's projected that by the end of this month, that there potentially could be over four hundred thousand vaccines uh, provided to Washington State, um, by, by at least two pharmaceutical companies that are, that are working on this. Um, the state has, um, at the state level, they're by aligning what they call a phase one A plan in terms of how these vaccines are going to be distributed. First and foremost, focusing on at-risk population, um, you know, people who are in nursing homes or assisted living facilities, long tear, long-term care facilities, things along those lines, as well as healthcare workers. There's, um, and not just those facilities, but also, uh, hospitals and other medical facilities. Um, and then even some first responders, particularly firefighters who are paramedics as well and ambulance drivers, things along those lines. So, um, the process, uh, has begun and, um, it will certainly take some time before there are enough, uh, vaccines that are available, not just for Washington State, but all of, uh, the United States or the world that, that, that matter. Um, you know, you, you see some estimates out there, you know, for, um, Washington State that, you know, by the time there's enough vaccines available for the whole population here in Washington State, which is over seven million people, we're looking at, you know, the July, June, July timeframe. And then there's always that quote unquote herd immunity that we need to get to before we can return to some level of normalcy, which is seventy percent of the population, um, at least, um, having, uh, the, that, the vaccine. So, um, it has begun and as more information becomes available, particularly in terms of who is eligible for, uh, vaccinations and, um, how they're going to be distributed, we'll certainly keep you posted and keep our, um, community posted and updated on, on that. Um, last Wednesday, I think it was Wednesday or Thursday, uh, we did put out the advertisement for the vacancy that is expected to occur on, um, this legislative body when, uh, Councilmember Simpson, um, steps down. And, uh, we left it open until, uh, close of business on Wednesday, uh, January thirteenth. Um, as I reported last week, uh, you know, we got a huge win, uh, with our, uh, updated language specific to the Defense Community Infrastructure Program or DCIP. I don't know if you've been following it, but, um, both, um, both the House and the Senate did approve the two thousand, uh, fiscal year two thousand twenty-one NDAA, uh, with overwhelming support, um, and actually a veto, um, veto proof, uh, vote in both the House and, and the Senate. So, um, it is likely that the NDAA as proposed will in some shape, form or manner, either in the near future or the medium future, um, be signed into law with our proposed um, amended language for the DCIP. Um, one of the next programs that we're moving on to is, um, is also a key federal legislative priority is, um, working with Congress to have thirty percent of the build grant, the former Tiger program, which are federal transportation funds, be made available to medium-sized cities, uh, cities with populations of ten to seventy-five thousand. And that is a, um, program that has originated here in Washington State. And Congressman Rick Larson from the second district up north has been a primary sponsor of that. And, um, uh, I think it's next Monday, uh, next Monday afternoon, I'm going to be meeting with my colleagues from Mount Lake Terrace and Shoreline, as well as senior leadership from Mr. Larson's office to talk about the strategy and the upcoming uh, Congress, um, in two thousand twenty-one and how best to, to approach that, including perhaps, uh, creating a brand new transportation program specifically for medium-sized cities. And here in Washington State, it's not just those three cities that are, because we're the ones kind of spearheading this, but there are sixteen cities that have signed on um, to this, uh, type of a program. And, um, also want to point out that, you know, this is not something that we're just kind of doing to do. Uh, the reason we're doing it is because the federal government, they have great programs, um, transportation programs for very, very large communities, whether it's cities or mega regions or counties, as well as very small and rural communities. But what they don't have is they don't have federal transportation programs for medium-sized cities. And that's why I would have been so adamant about this. And this is something I can tell you that I've been at for about, um, ten years now, if not, if not longer, I've lost track of it. But in any event, um, we're going to keep it going and, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll stay at it. On the North Clear Zone, also some good news to report. As you know, we had, um, run-ups against some challenges with the army regarding, regarding, um, acquiring the tactical tailor property with the funds that we have received at both the, uh, actually at the both this, this federal and state level, as well as the local level, specifically Pierce County. And, um, the, the item was that, uh, the army wasn't going to allow, um, relocation costs to be included as a part of the, uh, transaction, even though that is something that is required under state law and actually under just about every other federal transaction when the federal government is buying property. So, um, we have been working with the powers that be on that. Um, our, uh, J, JBLM command team led by the chief of staff, Tom Knight, and, um, the garrison commander, uh, Colonel Sky Duncan, had a meeting with, uh, the commander of AEC, which is the, um, um, Army Environmental Command down in San Antonio. And, uh, she understood the problem and the challenges that we're facing. And long story short, she is, uh, willing to provide a one-time exemption for us to move forward with acquiring tactical tailor that would include relocation costs. Um, at the same time, she also recognized that this is something that is not going to go away. And she has committed AEC to pursuing the proper, um, language changes to ensure that this doesn't have, that, that this just doesn't happen again. Basically that relocation would be allowed. Um, however, that is some language that we have, uh, proposed with our congressional delegation. We're hoping, um, will be included in the FY twenty-two NDAA, um, in two thousand twenty-one. So more to follow on that. But the punchline is that we are now in a position and we have the authority from AEC to move forward with acquiring tactical tailor. And we have made that call and we are now in conversations with them. And hopefully sometime in first quarter, we can, um, we can get that deal done. Uh, Fort Stilicon, um, turf infield project, um, you know, this is, uh, another, um, key priority for the council. We have secured one point two five million dollars of the one point six fund, one point six million needed to install um, or install synthetic turf material, material across the four ball fields at Fort Stilicon Park. And, uh, the last three fifty, we hope to be able to secure as part of the state legislature's budget in the upcoming session as part of the youth athletic fund program. If, uh, the state legislature decides to, um, fund that, it's a competitive grant program. Um, however, we do have another opportunity. Uh, recently we were approached by Pierce College. Uh, Pierce College for a number of years has been looking to build, um, essentially a men's baseball field for their men's baseball team and have it be commensurate with, um, the collegiate league that they play in. And, um, they have approached us about turning one of the four ball fields into such a facility. Um, it would also be made available through to all the other programs, programmers that we work with and partners that we work with. Um, they actually have one point six million dollars to bring to the table to help facilitate this. We have, uh, put together a draft interlocal agreement, uh, um, if the council is so inclined to move forward with doing this. Um, likewise, the Pierce County Board of Trustees, um, I understand that they're going to get a briefing here in the early part of, um, two thousand twenty-one as, 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 as well. If not, that's fine. We'll move forward with our project scope. But I think this is a great opportunity to partner with Pierce County and actually put an additional shine um, on those ball fields down there. Um, the, the funding source actually comes from the students themselves, um, who, um, contribute, I think it's twenty-five dollars a quarter or some sort, um, into a, um, pot of money that the students then make a recommendation on how they should be invested. And this is their recommendation to their board of trustees. And, uh, hence that's why, uh, Pierce College approached the city. Um, one of the questions we had was, uh, the balance regarding Title Nine because it's for men's baseball team. Um, they are also in the process of constructing a similar type field over, uh, either on or adjacent to their Puyallup campus for their women's softball field. Um, so wanted to pass that along to you as well. So again, um, we will have a draft ILA that we would like to just, uh, review with you and have a discussion as part of your next regular meeting on, um, January fourth, two thousand, um, twenty-one. Um, we had our exit conference with the state auditor's office last week and, uh, both the financial and accountability audit, a clean audit across the board. Once again, the auditor's office, very, very complimentary of our team under the leadership of our assistant city manager for administrative services, Todd Kraus, and of course, our whole finance team. But again, this is also a reflection on the mayor and the council and your leadership, as well as our department directors and all of our staff who day in and day out ensure the, uh, financial integrity of, of our organization. So just want to put a kudos out to everybody there. Um, also on Monday, um, January fourth, on your, on your agenda is a, um, an update to the agreement, the contract that we have specific to the Lakewood Station District Subarea Plan. Um, the, um, the, uh, your planning commission, after holding a public hearing, um, has asked for some additional focus and research regarding in the preservation of affordable fund, of affordable housing and the avoidance of displacement of individuals currently living in that subarea. This is, I think this is a really smart thing to do. And, um, but in order to do that, um, we don't have the financial capacity to be able to do that. That was, this is something that's new, was not anticipated. And, um, so our recommendation is to appropriate an additional twenty thousand dollars on top of the hundred thousand that's already been spent, uh, to continue this work. Um, and then incorporate that, uh, based on the planning commission's recommendation into the subarea plan. Um, that will be proposed to this body sometime in first quarter of two thousand twenty-one. So just wanted to give you a courtesy heads up that that will be on your agenda for, um, Monday, January first, January fourth, uh, two thousand twenty, twenty-one. Uh, also kind of a, just a, a bit of a heads up, more of a warning order, uh, the Point Defiance Bypass Rail Sound Transit let us know late last week that, um, the weekend of January sixteenth, right in the middle of the month, a Friday, Saturday and a Sunday, most likely on a Saturday and Sunday, um, they are looking at that as possible dates to do some dynamic testing um, on that rail line where they will actually have trains out there. And the purpose of the dynamic testing is to test all of the improvements that they have put in place. Um, and then, uh, once they do that later on in the year, then they would bring out Amtrak with their engineers and actually do the, the, you know, the testing and, you know, thing, uh, with the, with, with, with Amtrak. But the purpose of this dynamic testing is just to check and make sure that the improvements that they put in place are, 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 are working. So again, just wanted to give you a heads up. It could be occurring the weekend of January sixteenth and um, once that becomes, um, an actual date, we'll, we'll, we'll keep you updated on that. Um, some good news, um, regarding a follow-up conversation that we had with the the Skali tribe, specifically their police chief and their, uh, chief of jails. Uh, long story short, they communicated that they're actually going to issue a letter rescinding the letter that they sent us. Um, um, that, uh, where we wouldn't be able to use their, their, um, their jail for jail services, um, effective December eighteenth of this month, which is Friday. Um, and, uh, in addition, um, they committed to reopening negotiations, um, on a, on a contract since we actually have been working with them without a contract since the end of two thousand eighteen. Um, so hopefully we will receive that letter here in the next day or two. Uh, meanwhile, uh, we continue our discussions with, uh, Pierce County Jail, um, specific to, uh, video, video, video arraignment. So hopefully we'll have some good news on that in the near future, um, as well. Um, as I reported last week, uh, the city of Lakewood. As I reported last week, the city of Lakewood, we have dispersed or rather allocated all of the CARES Act monies that the city has been given by the state, the 2.685 million. If you recall, we did put in a request to Pierce County for $750,000, which is some of the costs we've incurred that we have not been able to seek reimbursement. Unfortunately, the county did get back with us and communicated at this point in time, they don't plan on making those funds available to the city of Lakewood. But one never knows. I believe they have a deadline of the 31st of December on that. But at this point in time, doesn't look like we'll be receiving any more CARES Act funds for 2021. Also, as you heard me report previously, the state came out with an eviction resolution program through the court system. And the county actually launched that last week up on their website. And so we've made that available on, I believe, on our website. But more importantly, we have sent information out to all of our landlords through our rental housing safety program that this program is now, is now, is now available to our landlords and tenants through our rental housing safety program. City Actions Days is coming up, you know, it's the long session. The state legislature is going to kick off on, I believe it's January 11th, 105 day session. At least if they typically, they, actually the last couple of sessions, they have not got, they have not gone into, they have not had extended sessions. So perhaps they will get done in 105 days. However, ADWC is having their Actions Day on February 10th and 11th. And if you have a desire to attend, please let me know. We'll get you registered. This year will be a virtual event. So it will not be down in Olympia. But again, it's a great event to kind of learn about what AWC is taking the lead on. And also hear from state legislatures as, as well as hopefully the governor as well. He's typically a keynote speaker at one of, one of the days. Also, legislative front, a couple of things I'd like to point out is a tax increment financing bill looks like is going to be introduced. The city of Lakewood is active and providing feedback and input on that. So we're cautiously optimistic that it will be introduced. One of the caveats is that it will be focused on property tax. One of the caveats is that the property tax from the state will not be eligible to fund a tax increment financing district. And that's good and bad. The not so good side is that that's less money to help finance a TIF. However, the, the attorneys believe by not having that in there, it does not require a constitutional amendment. So more to come on that. Also, I think it was last week, early last week, I participated in discussion with AWC and listened to some presentations from some state legislatures regarding some climate proposals on some carbon fees and cap and trade. And I know earlier today I forwarded to you our government relations team weekly update. And if you have a chance, page four of eight is a, Shelley did a, Ms. Helder did a really, really nice job summarizing that. So she saved me some time and effort in doing that for you. But it is certainly look a worth, worth looking at. The rumblings are that, that this is something that could move forward this session. And so again, it's something that we're, we're tracking pretty closely. Lastly, I just want to recognize all of our City of Lakewood employees. You know, I think as many of you are aware, you know, our employees day in and day out do a lot of things kind of under the radar that, you know, folks, folks don't know about, you know? And it's not about, you know, getting credit or anything about that. It's really at the end of the day about doing what's right, whether that's our police department or the charity or the guild or, you know, various city departments. And one that I do want to mention is our Public Works Engineering Department, who again, this year raised over almost $5,000 and have used those proceeds to buy a number of gifts for the children down in the Stilicon Woodbrook area and will be delivering that to the Stilicon Community Center again this year. So that's just one example. And I just want to recognize specifically Diana Hallar, who was one of our stormwater inspectors. She's been spearing head, spearheading that for, for, for a number of years. And again, just a great, great, great champion for those in our community who really need some help and assistance. So with that, that's my report. And certainly if there's any questions, I can try and answer them.
Go to Ms. Farmer.
Thank you. If we enter into an ILA with Pierce College for the turf infields, what happens to the 1.2 million that we've assembled so far?
Councilmember Farmer, it goes from a, it, it gets added on to the project because what the, what Pierce College wants to do is above and beyond just putting in turf infields. They want to put up fences, a press box. They, pretty significant improvement down there.
Okay.
So it would be above and beyond what the city is doing.
Okay, thank you. Also, I've been asked by a couple of constituents and I might be curious myself, updates on the Onyx Drive and Veterans Drive projects. I know at some point you mentioned that if they didn't get to a certain point before November, December, that they would have to pause and then start it again in the spring window. I was just curious where things stand.
So, so the Onyx project is, is moving along quite nicely. And they are expecting most of the work to be completed by the end of the year. That's not to say that there are, you know, might be some, some items that need to be finished up in the spring. But I know that they're getting all the lights energized as well as putting up the mailboxes. That's all happening. And so again, hopefully that'll all get done by the end of the year. So that project is just about, almost done. Veterans Drive, the last portion from the park all the way down to the VA, they did put down the base asphalt last week. So we don't have that, you know, torn up road anymore. They have put in, actually prior to that, they, they were able to get down the curb and gutter. And so they are still going to be out there where weather permitting to pour the sidewalk, the concrete on the sidewalk. But that'll occur intermittently between now and the end of the year. But it is likely they will probably button up a good portion of that project and then come back in the spring. But again, if they have opportunities of good weather, then they'll be out there doing, doing, doing that work. So that's it for, for Veterans Drive. The main portion of Veterans Drive that is completed, similar to Onyx, they are out there putting in the irrigation system, putting up mailboxes, streetlights, things along those lines. And that work will continue, will continue as well. But given the scope and size of that project, that will ultimately be finalized probably in early spring.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Before we go to council comments, Mr. Coffield, do we still need an executive session tonight?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. We'll go to council comments, Mr. Branstadter.
But thank you, Mr. Mayor. I certainly want to speak about the, the reverse parade. I, I do have to say that I was, as I was there and I wasn't really aware at the time about how long cars had to wait in line to do that. But I will say that this particular version of the Christmas parade was certainly seen to be enjoyed by our youngest residents. Far more than, than I, than I think than, than, than they did for standing in line to see Santa inside the city hall to be able to go and do that. So I really appreciate that staff was able to put that together and and, and all the folks over there. And I like the snow. And I, I've received a lot of good comments about the snow to look, to be able to go and do that. So that was a really, an excellent note to end the year on in terms of, of city events. That's all that I have as Mayor.
Mr. Bokey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I mentioned the parade earlier, so I won't go in again. It just worked out really well beyond my feeble expectations. So I'm, I'm glad I was wrong. Along the sidewalk thing, I know we've talked about Onyx, but I, I took the mayor's advice and I went for a drive yesterday on a, you know, a cool but sunny, relatively sunny Sunday afternoon. And on my way out to Woodbrook, I went down the portion of Veterans Drive that has been completed. And, well, it's not completed, as you just heard. I mean, there's still work going on. And people are already using those sidewalks like crazy. I mean, there was a dad and his two kids riding their bikes. There were people walking up from the park, coming around the corner there in the business district. There was a guy jogging, running on the side of the street. There was a gal walking her dog. I mean, there were a lot of people out on that, on, on those sidewalks out there. So I think we really have delivered, you know, and it was 3:30 on a Sunday afternoon. It was during a Seahawks game. So in, in the middle of winter. So, you know, I, I think it really has had a positive impact. And when completed, it'll just have a, a really wonderful impact for the Lake City neighborhood. And I'm, I'm with the mayor, you know, I finally did make it out to Woodbrook and I was just like, oh, wow. You know, all those projects, when people were gathering, purchasing properties over the last year or so, all of them are now in some phase of work. And it's just incredible. It's all at once. This is all coming out of the ground. So wow. So good job for, for staff and everybody involved in that.
Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, well, if it's all right with the rest of you, I would like to take a few minutes to say, I'm standing here at the corner of thank you. And for what you've expressed to me over the past seven years. And to do this, I would like to address a number of individuals. And I'd like to start, first of all, with Alice Bush and Brianna Shoemaker to say thank you for the work they did whenever I needed something done. Without those two women, I, my job would have certainly been a lot more difficult. I would also like to make a comment of thanks, but more of appreciation for the courage that Chief Zaro exhibited during some of the tougher times that this council faced during the Thomas trial. If ever there was an example of courage under pressure, it was that man. And I, I do respect that. I'd also like to comment that I will never forget Dave Buwer. Number of years ago, I walked into city hall before anybody knew me. And he was the first man I ran into. And he was gracious to me. In fact, he was very helpful. And it's little things like that that I do not forget. And Dave Buwer, if you get to know him, and a number of times I ran into him out in the park when we were working out. In fact, one morning I was running up that rock, those rocks there on the hill. And he was in front of me. I didn't know what was, was he. He's carrying his bike up the hill and I kind of muttered under my breath, like, get the hell out of the way. And then I realized who I was talking to. But I do greatly, I will always remember him. And then as far as city staff goes, the last person I will remember, although I, I do try hard not to, is the city manager. And I, I won't go into his, his use of the Queen's English. But I will say this. I appreciate, John, everything that you tried to teach me and the things that you did teach me. I used to tease you about the fact that you and I had to be the only city manager, council member who would meet at 0500 for years during our, our third Thursday of every month conference. The fact that you were willing to do that says more about you than it does I. And I know at times I probably sounded a little bit off the rails in your office. We talk about everything. But I know who the smarter person was in the room and it wasn't I. So I, you said something this afternoon and now it's coming back at you. You said you will miss me as a council member and as a man. I will miss you as a city manager and as a man. So thank you, Mr. City Manager. Now to the rest of you. What was it, Mr. Mayor, at the last retreat? What was it? Steelers wheel stuck in the middle with you with clowns to the left of me and jokers to the right? Well, I'm going to start with the man who sat to my left on the dais. And that would be you. You are, I know it's, 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 you know, I, for seven years I, I sat, you sat to my left. You were always the picture of stability and what the Latin Romans would call gravitas. You were moored. You were anchored. You held the council together. You have been and continue to be a beacon of light, a pillar of strength to this city and to this council. And I still think you're wrong about Roosevelt being our greatest president, but we can talk about that at a later date. But I do want to thank you, Mr. Mayor. You and I didn't talk a lot. But I do, I do very much respect everything that you have done for the city and for your example that I followed. Sitting to your left, Mr. Mayor, was the Deputy Mayor Whalen. And Jason, I got to tell you something. I have never met an individual who can find a silver lining in an otherwise dark day. And I have never met a man, I swear, you must wake up with a smile on your face. And that is a quality that I envy very much in you, that in some of the toughest things that we confronted as a council, you could always find something good. You always worked toward consensus. You are always civil and congenial. I'm not suggesting that the rest of you weren't, but I am saying, Jason, it is, it is written large in your character. And quite frankly, I'm envious, envious of it and I am very thankful for watching and learning from you. Further to your left, Jason, there were two women that I would like to acknowledge tonight. And I say this, Linda, not out of disrespect, but I am going to acknowledge Marie Barth, because I worked with her for six years. And the thing that I admire most about Marie was she was always principled. Always principled. She, she had a sense about this community. She had a sense about people and she knew where she stood. And that, I think, is a rare gift. As for you, Ms. Farmer, I admire your optimism. I admire your enthusiasm, but I have a challenge for you. In the year that I have listened to you, you appear to me to be one of conscience. Use it well. That is a very rare gift. Your comments about gender and racial equality need to be heard, need to be repeated. So that is your challenge for me. And all the way on the far left, the man with the made for radio voice, Mr. Bokey. I was going to say something about, if I recall correctly, you grew up in Billingham, correct? Do you also deliver newspapers when you were a kid? I can't hear it.
I helped a friend of mine.
Okay, well, listen. The picture I have of you, you captured beautifully tonight. You said, and I quote, as we were listening to the sharp or the shape briefing, you said, "The more lost I am." Paul, that is your strength. You speak for the common man and common woman here in Lakewood more eloquently than the rest of us. And I also appreciate the fact that you can look at a budget, talk numbers that I don't understand, but in listening to you, I started to get an idea of what they were talking about. So I appreciate that very much in, in the fact that you do represent, you have that voice for the, the ordinary citizen of the city of Lakewood. Although I will never understand- Although I will never understand why you got all teary-eyed about a street. That, to me, is just, uh, just amazes me.
That's.
Now, now, moving to my right, a fellow Midwesterner, guy by the name of Branstad. And Mike, of all of our peers, I feared you the most. And here's why. I would, as the mayor indicated in a newspaper quote, some of which was true, if I recall your email, I was, I would study for my city council meetings. You, you didn't study, you knew, you had memorized the darn agenda. And the thing that I admire was that gimlet I approach you took to every issue. You did it again tonight. There we were, listening to Ms. Kraus talk nicely about the budget review. And there was a question about the four oh one funds and why certain numbers didn't line up, which told me you are looking at every line item. That, sir, is something that serves this council and this city well beyond what you realize. And I am, I am honored to have sat next to a man who was that detail oriented. Last but not least, Ms. Moss. Yeah. I saved you for last for a reason, Mary. That's why I did the left and then the right. Cause I knew how this was gonna play out. Mary, do you remember that discussion we had one night after city council meeting and you told me you had a, a presentation to give to a group? And I looked at you and I said, "Why bother talking?" It's your presence that is the gift. You have a presence. You don't need words, Mary. It's your presence, it's your grace, it's your quiet strength. It's everything that you do behind the scenes for the city of Lakewood, Washington. And I want to say, and Mary, you knew this, because you would say something to me. Every time we would meet in the well before the dais and you'd come back up after a picture, I would always get your chair. It was my honor. All right, Mr. Mayor. The only other thing I have to say is, um, I wish each and every one of you, my wife and I wish, wish each and every one of you a very Merry Christmas. And I personally wish the council and the city of Lakewood a damn good twenty twenty-one. Thank you.
Yeah. It may be that the only thing that doesn't get better for the council in twenty twenty-one is that we won't have you here, John, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Farmer.
You want me to follow that? Really?
Went to, went to the communication. Did something out.
I probably know you the least, Councilmember Simpson, but I might just miss you the most. My fellow wordsmith, the devil's advocate, the, the thoughtful, very thoughtful person at the other end of the dais. Um, I've really admired, I admire all of you. Um, I really admire the, the time and the energy and the, and the active, I can see the wheels turning in your brain a, as you're, as you're thinking things through, talking, talking them through out loud. I really appreciate what you've done for this community, for my community, uh, and for the council. And so, thank you.
Thank you.
Can you see me? Can you hear me? Oh. Well. Mr. Simpson, I will miss you. Cause I'm gonna have to train somebody else to pull my chair out.
They shouldn't have to be trained, Mary. They should just do it.
Okay, Mike. I mean, you know. I have enjoyed working with you. I really have. And our side conversations have been really interesting. And you have surprised me and I have surprised you too. So, we'll miss you. Good luck to you in whatever you do. And as far as for my comments, I just want to add that the, the parade on Saturday was absolutely wonderful. It was wonderful. It was cold, but it wasn't raining. So that was a good thing. And I would just like to miss, miss each and every one of you a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Mr. Whalen?
Next. A couple of comments. I had a wonderful opportunity to be with many of you at the parade on Saturday night. My, my thought on, on the whole deal, as I think back about it, I was curious whether we'd have anyone show up, uh, given it was a static parade and, and how it was, you know, communicated to the public and whether it would be well received. And I was pleasantly surprised. It was, uh, exceeded my expectations and probably those of many others. The thing that was amazing to me was to look in the faces of those families and those children that came through and, it drove home the point that despite this craziness that we're all going through with COVID, huge desire for people to have a sense of normalcy in their lives, a sense of hope that is present, you know, with the holiday season. And to be able to share that with those folks and those children coming through was, was fabulous for me. So, I appreciate staff put it on and all of us who stood out there for, what was it, three, three and a half hours in the cold handing out, uh, we, city managers should be well pleased that we cleaned out every closet. I think that the Parks Department possibly could have had any trinkets given because we wiped it out. And, uh, so we don't even need to have a Lakewood cleanup day. I think we did it on Saturday night. Uh, I spoke with the, um, Clover Park School District tonight, just kind of gave them an overview of a few things uh, that we expressed in our connections magazine, which is well done, by the way, and some of the things that we talked about tonight. And I also, uh, noted that Mr. Simpson would be departing and we had a process in place to appoint his successor. But I want to comment on Mr. Simpson briefly. It's hard to comment on your service briefly, John, because you've been a fixture for a long time with all of us. And we have come to just, uh, not only know you, but to know you, to love you as a professor emeritus, as our editor and grammarian in chief. The man who always has the principled, steady hand on the pulse of the community as articulated in your many articles in the Suburban Times and elsewhere. And I think you, uh, you have a calm manner about you, sir, that understands this community quite well. And I think your service on the council filled a particular niche, as we all do. It's interesting how we all kind of come at this council from different perspectives. And it makes this wonderful diversity that creates the whole that we are, who we are. And because of that, and because of you, I think we've had great success over the last many years. That's off to you, John, and, uh, Godspeed on the next adventure.
Be quiet, Hayden.
Thank you, Jason.
So, uh, had a couple of items. So, with respect to the, uh, parade, I'd echo, echo what everyone else said. I, I, I think the fact that people could come out in mass really made them feel like it was normal, even though they're separated by being in their own little cell as they drive by. I, I got a lot of feedback, uh, on the wait and it was almost universally, not the wait that bothered the people who were bothered, but the fact that line cutter succeeded. It was like you're at the ferry, you know, and you, you're prepared to wait. You're gonna go somewhere and you're gonna enjoy the ferry ride and you're glad when you get there and and, but the, the line cutter upset you on the way. So, and that passes. By the time they got to us, uh, it was pretty, it pretty much universal pleasure. And, uh, and it was great to see. Uh, with respect to Mr. Simpson's, uh, potential replacement, uh, I was wondering, and, and I just kind of throw this out for the council, if like filings for office, there's a way that maybe once a week, now and once a week before, uh, we get up, uh, to the debt or kind of artificial deadline, we posted the names of the people who applied. Uh, it would give us, uh, some extra chance to contemplate it. And it would give people who are contemplating running, that notice that their best friends already decided to throw their hat in the rain. It's, it's transparency, uh, instead of doing it in a total vacuum. But, uh, it's, it's not a do or die type proposition. Some good news from Washington DC, maybe. Uh, there appears to be a bipartisan, uh, code relief package with legs that would, uh, if passed, distribute a hundred and fifty billion dollars to state tribal and local governments. Uh, this is not, would not be based purely on population. And the first, this, the distribution of the non-tribal and territory portion of it would go to the fifty states. It wouldn't go to the five hundred thousand jurisdictions like it did before. Uh, it wouldn't be based purely on population. There'd be some metric, uh, in there that had to do with what estimated lost revenue based on the revenue that uh, the, uh, states received or generated in, uh, in years past. There's a requirement in the bill is written that the state is then required to pass on forty percent to local jurisdictions. Again, not based on, purely on population. Population's a key factor, but population and, and revenue loss. But that they can't, they have to, they have to do allow at least, uh, forty percent and that there is not a restriction on the size of the local governments. Meaning that if Lakewood would be eligible for, uh, the, the second, portion of the second tier distribution, did some quick math and, uh, if this was done just on population, uh, the state would receive, um, an, an amount that was roughly equivalent to the first go-round. Uh, and Pierce County as a whole, uh, would receive, uh, about a hundred and fifty-eight, a hundred and sixty million dollars that, uh, on that forty percent pass-through. Uh, but it would go to all jurisdictions and not just to Pierce County. And that could mean ten or eleven million dollars for Lakewood if we were, um, if we, it was on straight population basis on. And we may want to band together with other jurisdictions to advocate a recapit, uh, distribution of the forty percent if this goes through, uh, because everybody in the state's gonna have to gang up against Seattle, uh, where they're gonna suck it up. And it's gonna be slowed up by whatever calculations and administrative burdens go with doing it some way other than on a population basis. Um, so just a thought there, watch it carefully. And given our history, you know, there is a history of doling out money and how difficult it is to give away money. Uh, as soon as this looks like it is, um, something like this is in place, uh, we will, I would suggest we make some policy decisions as to how we're going to allocate and distribute it uh, before the money gets here, so that can be administratively processed and get the people and businesses who need it as quickly as possible. So, um, that is an update. Uh, it will change within forty-eight hours. You never know. But it looks like the state, the state and local government component is, uh, proposed to be just about what it was, uh, i- in the past, in the first go-round. So, is there anything further to come before the executive session or before the executive session?
Actually, there is, Mayor, and I'd like to turn it over to the city clerk, Brianna Schumacher, which she has something that she would like to share.
I was wondering when that was gonna come. Ms. Schumacher.
So, Mayor Anderson, I'm gonna share my screen with you all here. And as you can see here, is the presentation of a virtual plaque to Councilmember Simpson. Mayor Anderson, would you like me to read it or would you like to?
Sure. In, in addition to, uh, the small white lies that came forward to the newspaper, uh, the, uh, I would like to recognize, John Simpson is council member from December two thousand thirteen to December twenty twenty. In honor and sincere appreciation of your exceptional leadership and outstanding service to the Lakewood community. Your hard work and dedication have contributed to the success of those around you and the city as a whole. And, and John, it, you know, it's, it's disappointing that, that, uh, various laws limit our ability to send you some tropical paradise for a month. Uh, but, uh, you, 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 you can keep this plaque and know that we meant it, uh, which hopefully is more important than, uh, the memories of your toes in the sand. Uh, again, I've, what I, what I said to the newspaper was my honest feelings. They quoted me uh, fairly accurately. I was happy for that. Uh, you probably, which means that maybe you aren't the only surviving journalist in Pierce County. But, we look forward to reading your reports, uh, as a freelancer or for the Ranger or wherever. Uh, because, uh, I've personally always enjoyed your commentary on subject of interest to the council is being particularly well-thought-out, uh, enunciated and, uh, punctuation perfect.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that. And thank you very much for this virtual plaque. And I didn't, I forgot to say something and if I did, I don't remember. But I just want to be sure I emphasize the fact that I think each and every one of you, as I believe I told, uh, the reporters, is the finest group of people I have ever met and worked with. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. The real, all your hard work.
Thank you.
Don't go in battle yourself with anybody in combat zones anymore.
You know, I will, I will say this, though. We're now down to, I, well, I guess Linda now is a grammar, grammar person too. But, you know, there, there were plenty of nights when you and the deputy mayor were starting to battle over grammar. And I think my eyes were rolling to the, oh, God. But it was inter, it was actually in its way interesting and kind of refreshing that there would still be people in this day and age that would battle over grammar.
Well, you know,
I shall carry on.
Where it really was fun was correcting the city manager. That was always. I mean, you know, John used to tell me in those Thursday morning meetings, you know, the Irish only talk to God. And then he met me. The book, I can read the article I can write about our city manager would be just tremendous. But now I probably can't.
Well, thank God. John, my words would be, I, I just, I really appreciate your willingness to poke the rest of us. When you, when you said, I'm the, you know, and, and goad us on, on certain things. And you do have a wonderful sense of humor. So, and you could, you could take a joke as well as anybody. So, that was, that's a, a great thing. But I, I really do, you, I do appreciate that over the years, you've challenged us and, and been that devil's advocate and, and pushed us on matters to make us think a little beyond the box. And, and when we're, we're heading down a track in a certain way and you saying, "I don't know that we even have to be on this track, let alone go in this direction." So, um, and that's a So that's a talent and I, and I do appreciate that.
It's just making up for my ignorance. That's all, Paul.
Well, I will say when you get into your grammar discussions, that it, it never ceases to inform and educate me. You know, having, I mean, coming from Cruz Bay where English is a second language.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, don't worry, but it's not even spoken in Boston.
Ending sentences, you know, it's all foreign.
I see that I have my work cut out for me.
Going to store in Boston and communicate with them there. And I feel.
You need a translator. Sorry, John. And we do want to go to executive session sometime tonight.
Where, without further ado, council will recess into executive session for approximately 20 minutes pursuant to RCW 4231101B to consider the acquisition of real estate. The council is not expected to take final action following the executive session. I will come back to this session in open session to adjourn the council without further, further action. So please exit and sign into the executive session. Thank you. further action. So please exit and sign into the executive session. Thank you.